Good evening, everyone. We'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance. We're ready for the standard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. This is our be administrative hearing. I will hear comments from our casters, and I will have comments from Cedarwood. And if you have any questions, people have, we're trying to answer them for you. And after that, we will give you a speedy response. Okay, so Black House, the meeting is being recorded. Oh, yeah, the meeting is being recorded. It's our work, technically. So, Black House, want to go first? Please.
Good evening to the board. My name is Jacob Son. I'm an attorney with the law firm, Wolf's Lido. We're counsel for Black Palace, here at this hearing. I understand from Mr. Ball that this is in fact being recorded. Black House's preference that it would be that this matter also be transcribed into written format again. And what I would suggest is that I interface with the village's attorney and make arrangements for that. So I'm just wanted to make that clear for the record that that's going to be the request at the conclusion of tonight's hearing. Couple of things that I wanted to start with and really for introduction. I have a handful of documents here that I'd like to introduce into the record and hand up to the board as the board will receive them. So what I've just handed up, handed up, excuse me, are the invoices for wastewater treatment that we're here to discuss today. The first is an invoice for wastewater treated from Black Palace in May of 2024. The second is an invoice for wastewater treated from Black Palace by the wastewater treatment plant in June of 2024. I've also handed up the written requests that were submitted by my office on behalf of Black Palace for review of those invoices. You'll note that those written requests also attached copies of the invoices. For the sake of completeness, I included the entire correspondence. So you have in front of you multiple copies of the invoices. One claim as it was rendered to Black Palace and one as it was attached to our written request for review. I've also attached or also included in our submission to the board an article from the Reporter from March 9th of 2023 regarding a number of issues, including some wastewater treatment issues that were discussed, I understand, at the board meeting on or around that date. Finally, included in the documents that I handed up to you for submission to this record is the village's responses to the notice to admit that were served by my office in the context of Article 78 action that's pending between the village and Black Palace in a separate hearing next week on September 20. I think that's actually a good envoy for me to talk just briefly about that Article 78. I think we're all familiar with it. We all know what it entails. Briefly summarize, it involves Black Palace's dispute over the industrial user permits that the village has issued to Black Palace for the treatment of Black Palace's wastewater. It also concerns the filling structures and formula that the village is presently imposing on Black Palace for treatment of its wastewater. The invoices we're here to talk about today in the administrative hearing we're conducting today is not really, has no bearing on that Article 78. It really relates solely to the specific invoices and the issues raised in our request, Black Palace's request for a review of those particular invoices. So this is without prejudice to any of Black Palace's rights and remedies in the Article 78. With that, I'd like to just kind of summarize the contents of the written request for review. Black Palace's issues with both of these invoices are stated clearly in both written requests. The first really is the May invoice. And the primary issue that Black Palace's request for review on of that bill is a $13,259.80 charge for additional charges. That represents a significant portion of the total invoice for May, which was $63,468.66. The invoice itself and the additional charges were billed and presented to Black Palace without any evidence that the costs themselves are attributable in any way to Black Palace's effluent and discharge for the wastewater treatment plant. And that's a problem for a number of reasons. Number one, we know that Black Palace is the only user billed by the village based on the contents of its effluent. So we know that from various FOIL requests that have been submitted to the town, to the village, excuse me, for which the village has provided responses. And we also know that from the contents of the village's response to the request for admit that you have now in front of you in the record. It's also an issue that there's no support for these additional charges because we know that the village has commissioned studies that establish that up to 50% of the wastewater that's being treated at the plant is coming from inflow and infiltration. And I'm borrowing a term from Delaware Engineering, who's spoken in front of the board and is quoted in that Mark Smythe article in the Reporter, saying that the 50%, really, the amount is hundreds of thousands of gallons of effluent is being treated by the wastewater plant that in fact shouldn't be there. So the absence of any evidence in the invoices linking these additional charges to actual effluent being sent by Black Palace to the wastewater treatment plant is a problem. And it suggests that although Black Palace is willing to pay its fair share, the fair share of its cost to treat its effluent wastewater, it suggests that what is in fact happening is Black Palace is paying far more than its fair share. Because again, to remind everybody, Black Palace is the only user being billed based on the component parts of its effluent and the only user, in fact, being billed these additional charges. That problem that we've identified in the May invoice persisted and continued on through the June invoice, which, of which the additional charges totaled $13,978.40 of a total bill of $82,890.23. So again, a significant portion of the total bill rendered for wastewater is these unexplained unsupported additional charges. You'll note that our request for a written review for the June invoice also contained an additional piece, which is that the BOD, so biologically dissolved solids, that component has an issue in the invoice because what essentially is alleging is that the BOD, the total BOD for all users being treated by the wastewater treatment plant is less on a per day basis in pounds than the BOD that Black Palace is sending to the wastewater treatment plant. And that's a logical impossibility. Obviously, Black Palace can't send more than the total amount being treated. But more importantly, what it's causing is Black Palace is paying greater than 100% of the total costs of the wastewater treatment plant to treat BOD. So again, going back to what we talked about with the additional charges. Black Palace is the only user in the town being billed based on the component parts of its effluent. And if it's paying greater than 100% of just, let's say, the BOD, then it goes without saying that it's paying more than its fair share of that effluent, the cost to treat that effluent. Now, despite our calling the village's attention to that issue, and although the July wastewater treatment isn't before you presently, we received the bill at the end of July for, excuse me, at the end of August, for July's wastewater treatment, and the same problem persists, where the BOD that is being treated for the entire town on a per day basis is less than the BOD that the village is attributing to Black Palace. Again, greater than 100%. Just a few more points. It's been roughly three to four months since the wastewater at issue on these bills treated, actually, at the wastewater treatment plant. It's been one to two months since Black Palace submitted its written request for review. At no point at any time during that process has the village, Cedarwood for that matter, provided Black Palace any additional explanation for the charges, the additional charges. At no point has the village or Cedarwood provided any explanation for how, in fact, the BOD could be reversed in accordance with what it has been. To the extent that the village now intends at this hearing to introduce additional evidence, again, three or four months after the wastewater issue was treated, Black Palace objects because it hasn't been afforded a full and fair opportunity to review that evidence, review whatever statements are going to be made, and evaluate the veracity of it and respond accordingly. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the board.
Thank you very much. And Wood, have any questions? I have something on the other side right now. It's all right. Cedarwood?
Yeah, I guess what we want to address first is we go over the formula. We go over the pounds of loading.
We go over the BOD, which actually is biochemical actual actions of mine. Thank you for that clarification. I'd like to, we might as well start, we might as well go chronologically. So I'd be curious to know, the $13,259.80 that's presented for the June invoice, so again, that's May wastewater, is summarized at the end of the bill. Is that correct?
Yeah, there should be a breakdown at the end here.
Where else does that information appear on the bill?
Is there a backup set with the bill? So that or not? So what we did was we submit our time to the bill for manpower, you say, right? And the initial time we put to go to the bill. That's what they could put on a bill. We can provide backups to that, no problem.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry. No, no, I just want to make it clear for the record, Mr. Swazza, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, Mr. Swazza speaking on behalf of Cedarwood. But to be clear, none of that backup has ever been provided to Black Palace. Is that correct?
Somebody's asked for it.
Yeah, until we got these two letters, and we've asked for it before that. And that was, again, a month, well, for this one, two months ago, right? But nothing's been provided to it.
Well, it's kind of typical to, when there's a lawsuit pending, when there's attorneys involved, so.
Okay, so I don't want to know what your attorney said, but has the information been gathered and prepared for Black Palace's review?
Yes.
And it can be provided on the main?
Yeah.
And just out of curiosity, the Cedarwood, did Cedarwood do anything to distinguish the, or break down the additional charges and determine whether it's applicable to the effluent that Black Palace is issuing or the INI, for instance, the inflow and other issues?
Inflow infiltration and would Black Palace assemble as a kind of two of a thing, right? You have infiltration infiltration, that's a problem. Nobody's denying that. That is flawed, right? That's just straight up water. There's very little loading, actually zero. It's mostly groundwater, right? But no loading associated. What we see from Black Palace has a high organic concentration, a high organic demand.
Have you done anything to study the INI to determine what is actually, it actually is made up of?
You mean actually test BOD?
Right.
Well, we know when it comes in, there's a lot of INI that leaks out to the inflow.
So the answer to that question is no. You don't actually know what the INI is bringing into the wastewater treatment plant?
No, we do not. We don't test the INI with BOD.
And it's true, isn't it, that Black Palace is the only user in the town that's being billed based on the component parts of its effluent?
Yes, because it almost makes sense to be a user.
It's also true, isn't it, that Black Palace is the only user in the town that Cedarwood has the discretion to levy additional charges, right? It's not Cedarwood levying additional charges, it's the village. Fair enough. So I'll rephrase my question. It's fair to say, isn't it, that Black Palace is the only user in the town for which the village has discretion to levy additional charges? Isn't that right?
Yes, correct.
So, let's talk a little bit about the BOD issue. The, and as it relates in particular to the June wastewater and the July bill. It's true, isn't it, that the total BOD that's per day, pounds per day, that's identified on that invoice is greater than the total BOD that the bill attributes to Black Palace, right? Well, let's look at it.
Yeah. It's Black Palace, right? So I have things in front of me. You have nothing to say. So we go to May. I directed a view. I have a copy.
I would, to help speak things on page four of the invoice. Okay, other chart would be the place to start. So you had 1998 for BOD?
Yes.
Oh, there's that, unfortunately. Yes, we don't, we're looking at here. So the pounds per day of BOD that Black Palace is contributing is listed there. 2,132 pounds per day, correct?
Yes, correct.
And it says that there also, that the total BOD being treated by the wastewater treatment plant in pounds per day is 1,990. Is that right? Is that correct? Can you explain to me how it's possible that Black Palace's total BOD on a pounds per day basis could exceed the total pounds per day on a per day basis?
Well, I'm assuming in this case, they are all certified lab results. So it probably depends on sampling.
So is it possible that Black, let's just take, let's just say we took one day. We agreed, and I'm going to ask you hypothetically. Is it possible that the total BOD that Black Palace is contributing to the wastewater treatment plant could exceed the total?
Can I see 100%? No, cannot.
But this bill indicates that on a per day basis, it did exceed 100%, right?
Yeah, 2,132 for that's based on their data.
So are you saying that there, that the 2,132 is based on the data you received from Black Palace?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. What data are you receiving from Black Palace that gives you that number?
In my notes, sheets, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, the monthly data sheet.
Okay, so if your statement today is that Black Palace is submitting monthly data sheets that shows, for the month of, in this case, June, that show 2,132 pounds per day on average, BOD type.
Yes, 2,132, yes.
Okay. And where is it that the 1,998 pounds per day come from?
That comes from certified lab results.
Who's certified lab results? So is it your statement today that that, the Phoenix data, that my understanding is that both the village and Black Palace is contributing to, shows 1,998 pounds per day for the month of June in the BOD?
Yeah, it shows it, yeah. That's correct, okay.
But would it be also fair to say that if I went, the best source of that information would be to actually go to the Phoenix data, right? And look at it?
And give us our results, we put them on display.
Right, so you'd agree with me then that if we went to the Phoenix data, added all the days up that they tested, divided it by the number of days they tested, it would equal 1,998 pounds per day.
Yes.
And the same thing for Black Palace, right? If we went to Black Palace's data, added up all the data they tested, all the data they generated, divided it by the total number of days, that would be the best source for that 2,132, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I would ask that if we're going to speak, we should identify so. So you sort of?
I'm a C-2, I'm off the C-2.
I'm off the C-2, you now?
Joey Brown?
Joey Brown, okay. And Joey, are you at the town?
I'm with the village.
With the village, the village, correct, yeah. Okay. Okay. Mr. Swazza, you'd agree with me, wouldn't you, that when, in rendering this bill, in fact, Black Palace was billed for greater than 100% of the total BOD that the wastewater treatment plant is being contributed to, right?
Yeah, for that part of the formula, yeah.
So that's an impossibility, right? It logically doesn't work.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir. Well, I'd like an answer to my question first. It's logically impossible that you could submit a bill for greater than 100% of the BOD for a particular month, right?
You submit a bill for what Black Palace provided?
My question, Mr. Swazza, I'm sorry. You sort your note to Mr. Swazza?
Yeah, so it's based on their disc jum.
Okay, so, but it's logically?
Am I correct? And we can't alter lab data. We get the results, we can't plug numbers.
So is it your statement today that you can charge Black Palace, that the village can charge Black Palace for more than 100% of the BOD being treated by the wastewater treatment plant?
Can I ask my question first?
No, I just want to answer to my question first.
I don't have the answer, I'm, okay.
It's also true, Mr. Swazza, that BOD based on the coefficients that the village imposes is the, is the component that represents the largest cost O and M? Yes, just let me finish. To operate the wastewater treatment plant, right?
Yes, correct, yeah.
So if you've got a situation where you're billing Black Palace greater than 100% of a particular component, and let's say that component's BOD, that's impacting the total bill more than any other component part of the bill, right? Is that, yes?
Yes, correct.
Yes, okay. Mr. Swazza, what's, what is the explanation that you have for how those numbers could be different in that way? How the total could be greater than the component? So how the total BOD could be less, excuse me, than the amount that one industrial user, even if it's the biggest, is contributing?
It depends on sample, right?
Okay. So you, so you, but you would agree with me, wouldn't you, that if you sampled both the, both Black Palace's effluent and the influent at the plant on the exact same day to the best of your ability at the same time, you wouldn't have that situation with you?
You're looking for a certain answer, and I'm just not going to fall into it, I'm sorry.
You didn't need the answer because you know the answer?
If somebody tests at the inflow implant and somebody touches the Black Palace at the same exact time, you're not going to get the same result.
So you're not, so is it your statement today that in deriving these numbers, you're not comparing apples to apples? So that's the only way you can get to that result, right?
The only way you're to have a result is that the influent, that's the only method that we have right now because there's no sampling station, which the village has been asking for for a long time now.
Okay.
So with a sampling station, we can do it, apple to apple.
Do you have effluent data from Phoenix as it leaves Black Palace's plant?
Yeah, but we don't know where it's collected, how it's sampled. Have you asked anyone?
I think it's those who watch that.
Yeah, they don't watch.
No, we, we, we stand more on the volume.
Mr. Swazza, I only have a, I only have a few more questions. If the situ, if the situation is as it appears on the bill, you would agree with me though, that Black Palace is paying for greater than 100% of the total BOD being treated?
I agree with that, but there's other factors.
Well, that's not what I ask you though. What I'm asking you is, is Black Palace is paying for more than the entire BOD that the wastewater treatment plant is actually treating, right?
I'll have to answer that, I'm sorry, I'm just not.
So just for the record, you're refusing to answer that question?
Oh, because it's just, you're looking for a certain answer, and I'm probably, it's just not that one.
Is that because the answer is yes? You don't want to get that answer?
No, it's not, it's not.
And final question on this BOD issue. Is it your statement today, Mr. Swazza, that it's impossible for Cedarwood to do anything to make certain that it's accurately capturing the percentage or proportion of BOD that Black Palace is submitting or sending in its effluent to the wastewater treatment plant?
The only way to be accurate is with a sampling station.
And it's possible?
It's possible, yeah.
Mr. Swazza, I'm, just move on to another issue. Do you intend to present any other evidence or documents to the board today?
Well, I would like to discuss the formula a little more.
Okay. In what aspects of the formula?
Well, you know, we do have a standstill agreement. You know, those coefficients, you're talking about these coefficients and how, you know, BOD is the highest, right? Well, we actually went through, this is with Black Palace, the manual from Black Palace, we own them last year, we actually handled the real coefficients, right, for BOD, CSS, fosters, and flow, based on the root process of the plant. We were in agreement. If you took what we came up with during that meeting, it was actually more. So the BOD would have been higher. So we actually took, we were using a lower coefficient for BOD. Because I saw that, I said, oh, this is going to make their bill go up. I want to stick with these standstill ones.
So you, so your statement today is that you, the village could be charging a higher coefficient based on numbers that Reed and Black Palace worked on together? But it's not.
We're not, no.
And if that were the case, if the village was charging a higher coefficient for BOD, that doesn't change the fact that your invoices suggest that on a per day basis, on average, and this is how the bill is calculated, that Black Palace is submitting greater than 100% of the total BOD on a per day basis?
It would still be less if we, it's less now than these.
Okay, but you're going back to the coefficient. What I'm asking you is, the coefficient.
Look, I'm not discussing anymore of them.
Okay, so again, Mr. Swazza, not answering. Okay, last question, Mr. Swazza. You'd agree with me, wouldn't you, that at least on these particular invoices, that there's, that there's no backup, no additional information provided, no justification for the additional charges that are identified there?
We have it.
And it's your, but you don't have anything to present today to the board, correct?
I think so, thank you.
We have.
All I'm asking is whether you intend to present anything to the board that regarding the backup for those additional charges?
No.
I'm also, you have anything really you want to say? Or anything you want to say?
Can I ask my question now?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
When the BOD comes in from Black Palace, it gets mixed with the INI, does that make the BOD go down?
Yeah, well, it's a concentration.
And that is, we build from their flow, their BOD and the CSS, correct?
Correct, yeah. You take their flow, you reform it, like the current pounds today, and how they go.
You guys have any questions about how we go or?
Well, I'm, what you just said, I'm interested in. You said that when the INI comes in, it mixes with BOD, does it cause the BOD volume to go down? Could that be the reason why these numbers go up or no? Because I don't know, I'm just, I don't know that. I'm not in that field, so I'm just asking.
The issue is, without sampling stations, with the true split sampling, you know, they go out and sample on an influent that you operate through. Black Palace takes their sample, they're at different times, right? You can't coordinate it directly, even there are influences of INI. You know, they could take, oh, you know, big slug if something comes through their process, they grab the sample after that organic slug, they're going to get a lower number than we got at the plant, right? And it's just, without a sampling station, these are best got, you know, they're close and you get results, but they're not, they're not accurate. They're, without a sampling, if you guys want to put us to bed, we got to put a sampling station in. I don't know how else to clear it, I can make it.
It's not only just?
It's not just the, it's not just that. When you're saying sampling the same time, it's the same volume of sample taken. It's also flow rated, so right now, I think it's time. Here's the time, I believe, and I believe ours is mainly time. So like, we're sampling every four minutes, they're sampling every three minutes. There's always an opportunity for a missed portion that you will grab. So if you can do flow portioning, which is what's the ground up for, the sampling station, if they have a spill, there's a spike in flow, whatever, you're going to take more samples there in that timeframe than you will and apply the lower flow rate. So.
I'm not saying anything else from these folks. I just have one final favor to make, and that would be that I think, if anything, what today has illustrated is that there's an apparent inaccuracy in the formula and the structure and the way it's built. And it's been revealed by the fact that we have admission from Cedarwood and extension of the village that Black Palace is being billed for an impossible amount of BOD greater than 100% of the total contribution. And by the way, if we can't trust the total contribution that they're measuring, I don't know what we can trust. So the, this is uniquely impacting Black Palace because it's the only, as I said earlier, the only user that's being treated this way, the only user that's being billed on these component parts. And if it's paying greater than 100%, as a matter of fact, cannot be disputed. It's paying more than it should.
Anyone else?
So Cedarwood is paying, or is billing this on the calculation provided by Black Palace?
Correct. There's, there's two components to that. There's Phoenix data that Black Palace and Cedarwood have agreed upon to receive. But there's also data that the village, that the also data that the Cedarwood is gathering, that Lactalis does have window of insight into. And...
Can you say it again, I'm starting this.
Yeah, there's data that the Village is relying on, that's set forth in these bills, that Lactalis does not have access to, does not have insight into. And that's hence some of the questions that we're having. And so, what would be the preferential situation? I apologize for the pause, because I am weighing my next word very carefully, because as, there is a pending Article 78, obviously. What I would say, and what I have authorization from Lactalis to say, is that Lactalis wants to pay a fair share of what it is contributing to the wastewater treatment plant. As Mr. Swazow alluded to earlier, there have been discussions, those discussions are broken down for a whole host of reasons that I won't, for everybody with, some people are aware of them, some people may not. Lactalis' desire is to reach a resolution, but it has to make sense, right? And Lactalis' desire to be a good partner to the Village, and I hope the reciprocal, yeah, reciprocal, good basis exists. But we're not there right now, certainly, and maybe it's a discussion that should be had between council first, involving maybe members of both sides. Agreed.
And do you mind if I ask a few questions, if the board has any questions?
Yeah.
For the recording, I'm Nick Cortez, I'm an attorney for the Village representing the many Article 78 proceedings, but for the purposes of this, Brian, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to answer some of the questions, or not answer some of the questions, but give some explanation that you weren't allowed to give previously. You had said that there are factors that contribute to the disparity in BOD numbers, the total BOD and the Lactalis BOD that they're ultimately charged for, what are those other factors?
Well, it's mostly, you know, they sample at a certain time, we sample at a certain time at the plant, and there's just, there's variations, it's not like the Village isn't putting out a straight amount of flow and loading right to the influent. Lactalis isn't, you know, they're an industry, they're a larger industry, but they're not pulling out the exact same amount of loading flow out of their discharge, where they do their sampling, but there's natural variations. And I keep harping on the fact that we need a sampling station where we can do split sampling, we can have our sampler set, we can have theirs pulled out at the same time, we can verify by certified lab, and that's the best way to do it.
So then, the numbers that you're getting from Phoenix versus the numbers that you're getting from Lactalis are attributable to sampling at different times, when there's different, I guess, loading profiles or whatever?
So it's just, you know, you have a large collection system, right? And they kind of come in quick, I think it's half an hour or so, or 20 minutes, 20 minutes roughly travel time from Lactalis to the plant, but if you take a sample of the influent, their sample on, you know, their product at some other time at their influent, it's impossible to get them at the same time.
Okay, that makes sense, but I guess my question is, how do we decide what 100% really is? Because it seems like that's a moving target currently.
Yeah, well... If there's a mistake, I gotta go back on this bill, because I didn't see that it was over 100%. So if there's, I gotta look through things, there's a mistake, there's a clarifier, and that's, that's something, you know, I just wish if Lactalis or somebody saw this, instead of, you know, no offense to you, just have an attorney come and fight us about us at a meeting, we, they should have said, hey, look, you know, this is over 100% of their comp or something, if you have an error, I would have looked at it, you know? It could be, it could be an error on it.
So fair to say, if there's a legitimate error, it's gonna be correct, right?
Yeah, it could be an error, I gotta look at it, yeah.
Okay, so, well, obviously, that'll be something for the board to address when we, when you guys kind of think about how this is gonna turn out as far as a decision in the future. Let's talk a little bit about, because it's not just the BOD that was why we're here, it's the extra charges as well. I believe that the extra charges that Lactalis is billed for are extra chemicals, extra sampling, extra manpower. Start, let's start with extra chemicals. How are we attributing those to Lactalis versus, you know, kind of the total loading in the plant? How do you, how do you break that down and make those decisions?
For, and I need John on this one, because you know the, you know how I said it, I do off the copy I had. For the chemical, there's a certain, when Lactalis is offline, you know, shut down, or, you know, low production, low flow, low loading, there's a certain amount of chemical to use, right? It's a polylumine chloride, and I think we use around 90 to 110 gallons per day.
We use, no, we use 300 gallons a day, is what we set as our limit, probably, so anything over 300, and it was based off of the chemical that was used typically during shutdowns. When, when they're offline, that our chemical was used was about 200 gallons a day of the polylumine chloride, so we figured, you know, allow for some variations within the system, so they went to 300. So anything over 300, usually what we see is when we're seeing the color issues that we have at the plant, that we have to increase our chemical when they're under production. And there's days when they're running that, we don't have that additional use, depending on what, what's going on at the plant. As far as the, what were the other components that I'm, um, talking about, but your other one was, was manpower and...
Yeah, the manpower, it's just, when we're having these issues, you know, the extra manpower guys, when I say extra manpower, it's home somebody way from their typical tasks to go and monitor the filters and make chemical adjustments, try to keep us under our, to make a deal on that, which is a point five.
Okay, that's, that's the manpower thing, but I wanna just focus on one thing at a time. So with respect to the, with respect to the extra chemicals, what I'm hearing you saying is that data exists when Lactalis is not operating, as to the chemical loading, rather to the chemical contribution to the system that you put in normally?
Right.
And what you're doing is you're judging extra based on when they're operating versus when they're not? Like, okay.
Essentially, when, you know, when they're offline in the plant, again, our chemical drops considerably, we have phone cleansed up as far as turbidity and what have you, and then when they're back up in full production, usually like on a Wednesday, we can see it increasing, and then we're using more chemicals to try to keep our turbidity, you know, under limit, so, yes.
Do you have, do you have documentation at all that kind of, that explains all this stuff, the averages of, you know, when at Lactalis isn't operating versus when it is operating?
Oh, yeah, the sheets, that, yeah, he tracks, he tracks over at the plant, yeah, the operators track.
All right, so what I would suggest is that that stuff needs to be put before the board, and I understand your objection, Jake. So what I, what I would suggest is that, that Lactalis submit documentation to the board, and then also that documentation needs to be submitted to Lactalis, and they should be given an opportunity to give a written response.
Nick, just to be clear, I think you meant that Cedarwood should submit that information to the board and Lactalis?
That's what, that's what I meant, yes, yes, of course. So Cedarwood should submit all this data to you guys, and it should be given to Lactalis simultaneously, and Lactalis should be given a reasonable amount of time to make a written response to that documentation, because we don't want anybody to be surprised, and they do have, they do have the right to, you know, mount whatever kind of argument or defense that they want, to support what they believe the correct bill should be. So is that, is that suitable, Jake?
That's acceptable, I would just, a few points in response to the issue, Mr. Swazow.
Well, I'm not, I'm not...
Oh, okay, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So, that's, in a nutshell, that's where the extra chemical stuff comes from? Yes? Okay, let's talk about the additional sampling, additional testing. Again, I know that you guys test regularly. When does additional testing come into play, and how is that attributed to Lactalis?
When we have something that comes in, whether it's high loading, some vigil thing, a lot of, you know, fat buildup on the walls of the egravation tank, chlorine, odd things, something we sample to try to see what it is, and, you know, we sample to see one, to try to identify what it is, where it's coming from, and two, to help us know how to treat it, right? If it's a high BOD, okay, we gotta, we gotta make sure our bugs are okay to process their trouble or stuff like that, so, but that is above and beyond our normal, you know, we have our toxazine testing quarterly, toxazine, because we have our monthly sample for D E C, anything that we have to do that directly related to Lactalis, in addition on top of our normal testing, that's what we consider a good thing.
Right, so I guess the question is, how do we, how do you attribute that to Lactalis as opposed to just kind of being incident to what normally happens day in and day out at the plant?
Well, if you walk in and, you know, like Brian just said, milk fat, if you will, around the E2 tank, or the tank is completely white, it's limited to where it can come from, so try to identify it, and if we haven't had a spill reported to us, we'd grab an extra sample to try to figure out what that is, especially a box sample, where it's fat oil and grease, to try to determine if, you know, you know, what possibly came into the facility. And that's normally something we don't see unless there's a possible product loss or...
Okay. So if you see, I mean, obviously, it's a dairy plant that we're dealing with here, so milk fat lining the tank, I guess that's a reasonable inference to draw, but how would we know that it's, that it's not milk fat coming from somewhere else, like a farm or something like that?
There's a little farm, yeah, there's a little farm, so, right.
Okay. Okay. I guess, and then just a couple of questions about the additional manpower, how do you derive those numbers? Obviously, you have people who are regularly scheduled at the plant to work regular hours, are we talking about call-ins, overtime? And, and again, if we are talking about, you know, bringing people in that aren't supposed to work, or having people have to work extra hours, how are we attributing those extra hours to Lactalis and not just it being a particularly messy day at the plant? I don't know really what, what word to use there, but you understand, right?
What the plan looks at or whatnot. Some of them are based off of when we are notified of a product loss, so, you know, especially if we got guys coming in at night to take care of that after hours, and some of them would contribute to, again, when we're using additional chemical, to monitor, try to keep our, stay within our permit, so the guys are, usually one or two people might be pulled off to try to monitor the filters and the clarifiers to keep things in check, if you will, to go on, so. Some of that is done during their course of their normal workday, however, it also pulls them away from another aspect that, within the plant, that they would typically be working on.
Okay, but just totally fair to Lactalis, if we have a situation where we have people who are on shift normally, that are just pulled off to do another task, but are still working normally, I mean, even, even to me, to be perfectly honest, that's, that's a cost that probably shouldn't be attributed to Lactalis, I mean, would you agree with that?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's an adjustment that can be, that can also be thought of, and should be thought of based on what you're saying, obviously.
Yeah, they're on site, you know, during their normal workday, or during normal work time, hours, yes, I, yeah, I agree.
Okay, well, I appreciate your candor in that regard, certainly. Now, do you have documentation about call-ins and overtime and stuff like that at the plant?
Yeah.
And then, and with that, I'm assuming that that would track with, you know, a product loss report, or, you know, some kind of issue at Lactalis, yes?
Yeah, I'm sure, typically, I believe Holly's the one that does most of the notifications to our chief operator.
Okay, so I would just ask that you submit that documentation to the Village, both the overtime and call-ins, and then also a, also a list of reports that you've gotten over the course of those two months that are in question, because the board needs to check and make sure that those things correlate.
Okay.
Okay? And again, Lactalis will have the opportunity to look at that documentation and submit whenever it might like to submit in writing. I think that that's all the questions that I have for you guys. I, again, I appreciate your candor with, especially the manpower thing, and, yeah, I'm done, thank you.
Just a few more points in response to Mr. Swazow, but I promise that we'll not update the book. Number one, the idea that the 100% of any component is a moving target is not the way it's billed, right? The 100% is the 100%, and that's how they charge the fat from Lactalis. Secondly, what I'm hearing a lot of is the assumption that anything, any issues that are experienced at the wastewater treatment plant are Lactalis' responsibility, and as you heard, if there's an issue at Lactalis, it's reported to the wastewater treatment plant. So we'll find out, I guess, from the information that's going to be submitted, whether all this stuff actually ties down or not, and whether Cedarwood has the goods, so to speak, on all of these additional charges. But I think it's unfair, to the extent that we see it in the documentation, for Cedarwood to simply assume that any issue, regardless of what it is, is attributable to Lactalis. And what, the last thing I would suggest with respect to these additional charges would, again, relative for outside, Lactalis is the only entity being billed, that allows it to be billed with these additional charges, there's nobody else, no other users in the Village that gets these. What I'd ask the board to look closely at is whether, in fact, all of the additional charges, 100%, in other words, that amount it takes for Cedarwood to operate the wastewater treatment plant, is simply being subsidized through Lactalis, or whether those additional charges have actual merit to tie into Lactalis for that.
George, do you have something you wanna say?
No, I'm, I don't believe that at all, you know, we're getting called for all product loss, because we have called up, that's the whole time we've settled, and Cedar's coming in, so, and that's where the sampling station would clarify a lot of this, as long as we're all sampling the same, same flow, same, same way, same volumes, that's the only way you're gonna do it.
I have another question. When you, when Cedarwood gives us a copy of the overtime hours that are being billed through Lactalis, are you, are you going to show it to people that were there, that included with the overtime, or you gotta make adjustments to that? I'm just, because we're talking, right, we're talking about, so many people were there already doing other jobs, and then they were pulled off to do something for the flow or whatever, like that.
Yeah, essentially, any call-ins, or...
Right, okay. So, has anybody else here had a question? Okay, thank you.
You're good.
We will look at it, and we will get back to you as soon as possible, and we gotta do it before we go, of course.
I think it's probably unlikely at this point, I'd be guessing, they've gotta have the opportunity to respond to the evidence that you were...
So we can, we can...